Hello.
Yeah, right? You're super official. Yeah, we will.
And then I'll send it over.
City in L.A.
Oh, that's your room.
So that sort of.
Some gag.
Fuck you.
Good, I saw your poster.
You know, I have a patio.
I remember.
It sounded like you make me feel.
Thinking when I got home.
It's all the same.
I mean.
We're still.
We're back out about five minutes ago.
Like, I don't have them too at all, so.
How could we?
I used to think people like. And in the. A lunch and I didn't.
I'm not getting.
My mother did too. Wouldn't that thing off? But I.
All right, everyone, we're gonna come to order here and take our time as we start the process. One other council member is yet to come in, but I know she's gonna come in like lightning fire in a minute. So I hereby call the Palm Springs Special Joint Meeting of the City Council, Boards, Commissions, and Committees of June 17, 2025 to order. Is anybody in the House today that would like the assistance with sign language interpretation? Then our able-bodied sign interpreter will not have to stand up here unless somebody arrives later on tonight. He'll come back up. If you please will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, those who are able to stand, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
I acknowledge that the land on which we gather, live, and work on that is currently known as the City of Palm Springs is the original homelands of the Agua Caliente Band of Cahuilla Indians. The sovereign band of Agua Caliente people have stewarded this land throughout the generations and will continue to steward this land for all future generations. City Clerk, may we please have roll call?
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
And do we have public testimony?
Yes, we do. We have one speaker, Michael Pickens.
All right, the next item is public testimony. The time's been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on Agenda Items Only. Michael Pickens, you have two minutes. Please come to the forward podium.
Michael Joseph Pickens, to all council members, committees, and agenda items, for a year and a half, we all had the privilege of hearing Abraham and his efforts on behalf of Palestine and the Palestinian people. I am wondering why he is not a new, new member today? Did any Israel-supportive Jewish council member follow up with him even just to meet and let him vent? Any words of encouragement to have him and Palestinian presence at any of the committee tables? To the Christians on the council, in today's world, Jesus is a Palestinian. As I am a theistic Satanist, I am informing all of the new members, for five years, I have had a difference of opinion with the Palm Springs brand. I do not have to like you, you do not have to like me. However, we all can still cooperate and coexist in respect. When your version of supremacy is the only acceptable respect and it is reverse discriminates civil rights, that is when I use Malcolm X and Dr. Martin Luther King's equitable resistance. I do not need to use bombs and terrorist attacks to solidify grant funding. No, I will continue to advocate freedom for my civil rights.
Thank you, Michael. Let's see, nobody online, Madam Clerk?
No further speakers.
All right, sweet. Before we get to the next item, I want to know how many people got the fortune cookie and got gypped tonight? Did anybody get a real fortune in your cookie? Oh, there's a couple. So here's my fortune, this is my fortune. You are the apple of my eye. That's a fortune from my Super K fortune cookie. So if, I hope you, we had a couple of good fortunes out there. And the other is Chinese, so we're gonna have a test to see who learned the best Chinese from our fortune cookie by the end of the evening. So next, we have the opportunity to administer the oath to the newly appointed or reappointed board members and commissioners for this open enrollment period. The newly appointed and reappointed board members and commissioners are, and I'm gonna call your name out, and if you can come right up front, I will administer the oath to you. Stasik Wanderbaum, Richard Llewellyn, Samantha McDermott, Scott Nevens, Malachi Strong, Jason Kravitz, Alexandra Phillips, Lily Hanner. So please come forward. And do we have their certificates over there? Sweet. Can you hear me? Oh, Malachi.
He's on his way, Ron.
Oh, here he comes. Excellent. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I say your own name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and to the Constitution of the State of California
and to the Constitution of the State of California
and that I take this obligation freely
and that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations on your new term as Commissioners for the City of Palm Springs. And we have official certificates over here with the clerk, so if you'd like to go there, and she'll give you your certificate. Well, that was fun. All right, next we have what we've all come tonight to hear is our presentations from each commission, board, or committee. And somebody from each respective group will come and share their goals and accomplishments and what the path looks like going forward into '25 and '26. And, you know, as, as we do it and as we gather today, you may hear, you know, a dozen times tonight, that we truly thank you all for the time, the energy and the effort that you put into the commissions, you know, throughout the year, and the investment of energy and the due diligence and your attention to detail and wanting to do a good job on your commission is truly appreciated. And all of us on council, thank you for your service. And we thank our staff liaisons who work with each commission to help assist in the work of that each commission. We thank them for their work throughout the year also. So first up, you know, we've got the, I think it's alphabetical. It's alphabetical, so you all can follow along with me. But part of our presentation tonight is, we're gonna do it in how many minutes? I didn't hear that. Five minutes, thank you. So we got five minutes for each group to come up and, and share with us. And what's exciting tonight is that each group has been asked to identify how the goals and the strategy that council set in March is going to be reflected in the work that you all do as we go forward this year. So we're very excited to see what you all have in store and to show how we are aligning the work of council directly with the work of each commission and hopefully take away some of the mystery that has existed in the past on what, you know, the commission may be not getting enough guidance, enough direction. But this way, we all know, you know, we're all working toward the same end goal. So first up, let's hear from the Administrative Appeals Board.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council, my fellow city staff and members of the public joining us for tonight's joint council session. My name is Mitch Navhan. I'm the co-compliance supervisor for the City of Palm Springs, and I serve as one of the city staff liaisons that works directly with our city's Administrative Appeals Board. So I'm happy to present on their behalf tonight. Next slide, please. So the Administrative Appeals Board staff hears appeals on actions taken by an administrative officer or administrative agency of the city relating to ministerial enforcement of the provisions of our city's municipal code. What that means is the enforcement action other taken by our Code Compliance Department or Office of Special Programs Department. Those are typically the type of appeals hearings that are presented to our Administrative Appeals Board. There are things having to do with our city's vacation rental, vacation rental program, our city's cannabis enforcement program, and our city's general municipal code enforcement program. The meetings meet, the board meets on the fourth Wednesday of each month, and for the last year, they've met at 5:30. They recently made a change, and meetings will now commence at 2:00 P.M. in the afternoon on the fourth Wednesday of every month. Looking a little bit at what our residents, stakeholder make up our board, it consists of five members and two alternates that are appointed by our city's council. Our current chair is Patrick Basili. He served on the board. This is actually his second term. I believe he's entering into his fourth year with our Administrative Appeals Board. Our vice chair, David Parker, who's entering into his third year. Board members Heine and Corin, who just completed their first year with the Administrative Appeals Board this month. Board member Winterbaum, who just took his oath, served as an alternate in this last year and was, was moved up to board member beginning this year. And then we have board member Llewellyn, who also just took his oath, who I believe serves as an alternate to assist. So it's, it's a great group. I have the pleasure of working with them. They really do take a lot of time to review the cases that are presented to them. Many times, these administrative appeals include large monetary penalties, and they're, they're difficult, difficult topics to, to address, I believe. They handle them with care. They, they ask insightful questions, and they really give our, our residents who, you know, unfortunately end up in the position as an appellant a good opportunity, and, and they represent, I believe, what, what council's intentions are for the actions of that board. Next slide, please. Looking back on the last year, there were 28 code cases, 28 cases that were scheduled for appeal with the Administrative Appeals Board. These were largely vacation rental, vacation rental appeals. There were a couple of cannabis enforcement appeals, and then there was one general building and safety code appeal of those cases. And then, you know, we just had a meeting last night, so I know it says four pending there. Those were, those four were actually upheld. So looking back in the last year of those 28 cases, 22 were upheld. Four were overturned, and then two were withdrawn by the appellant before they went for their hearing. How that relates, it's, it comes out to, I know it says $24,661 in administrative fees to facilitate the cost of these appeals. Adding in the four ones, it comes out to $28,461 in administrative fees, and then approximately $86,500 in administrative citation fees that were assessed to our, to some of our residents that were ultimately upheld by our Administrative Appeals Board. Next slide, please. Looking ahead, the Administrative Appeals Board is looking to work with the city council regarding an update on the current Palm Springs Municipal Code as it relates to the vacation rental program. There's been discussion and draft recommendations written to update the code to hold property managers at fault for violating the short-term rental rules rather than the homeowners. The Administrative Appeals Board members are looking for a way to get the future homeowners in the City of Palm Springs to be aware of the short-term rental process before purchasing the home. And as far as these recommendations go, in the, in the meeting that was held yesterday afternoon into last night, the board actually approved to move forward with presenting it to you as the council. Their recommendations, you know, again, they're seeing and they're hearing from our residents and stakeholders, their experience when, you know, they get the unfortunate letter in the mail from, from our Special Programs Department notifying them that they've been in violation, and they now have this large fine to pay and this permanent eligibility. Through these meetings, they've had the opportunity to speak with residents. Some of them who often say they were just completely unaware they were purchasing the home, their realtor told them that they could do this. The house was a vacation rental before. They had no idea there was a regulated program. And so after these cases have been heard, you know, again, our, our board members deal with these cases with great empathy, and they've put a lot of work into drafting these recommendations that are gonna be presented to you. I believe they started working on this like three years ago. I think the, the the board, the board term that was before them, and the current board has kind of carried that on and shepherded it to the point where it's ready to present to you. So I know that we appreciate your consideration in reviewing those. And like I said, I'm, I'm really happy to work with, with the folks that are sitting back there. Every month on the fourth Wednesday, I always look forward to, to meeting with them and, and presenting the findings that myself and my team have come across. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mitch. Appreciate that. And next, we've got Commissioner Samantha McDermott for the Airport Commission. Come on up, and you're gonna notice that a yellow blight will blink when you've got a minute left, and a red light's gonna be blinking there in front of you nonstop when you hit to the five-minute mark, so you know you're done, okay?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna do my best. This actually started about, it was like 30 minutes up until about 15 minutes ago, so I'm really gonna zip through this. Good evening. I'm very honored to be here representing our Airport Commission this evening. Our chair, Kevin Cochran, our vice chair, and Todd Burke could not be with us this evening, so they've asked me to step in and share some of our progress on their behalf. Thank you to all of you up in front of me here, the folks over sitting on the side, and everybody in the room for all of your contributions. Without you, we wouldn't be doing all the great things that we're doing. Our mission, you're gonna see our mission on the screen, but here's the short vision, shorter version. We're here to help guide PSP's growth in a way that reflects the values of Palm Springs. We've just completed our FAA master plan shaped by extensive community input. And because PSP is city managed, we're not our own authority, collaboration with many of you in the room is essential. From historic preservation to expansion plans, the conversations can get passionate, and that's a good thing. That means people care. We're not just planning flight paths. We're planning for people, place, and most importantly, for Palm Springs. No pressure, Commissioners, right? Though the airport is based in Palm Springs, our commission represents all nine cities throughout the Coachella Valley as well as Riverside County. It truly is a regional body with diverse perspectives and experiences. Several Commissioners are here tonight. If you're in the room, please stand and be recognized. Thank you for helping to guide PSP's future with insight, balance, and heart. Now, let's talk progress, because there has been a lot. Just this year, we served over 3.2 million passengers. That's just 2024. 2025 is already off to a fantastic start with five record-breaking months. That's right, May numbers just came in. Nearly 500,000 passengers came through PSP in March alone. That is truly our peak month. Summer seat capacity, believe it or not, is up double digits, and the momentum is strong. Restaurants in retail since the fall of 2023. We've, we've rolled out a revamped concessions program. Seven new restaurants are now open, including local favorites Trio and Las Casuelas Terraza, and as well as Vina Bolo. So if you haven't had a chance to take a look at that wine bar, it's in our courtyard now as well. Five new shops focused on local brands, including Destination PSP. Shout out to Councilmember Bernstein. Now, our Airport Master Plan, it was approved by you in January. Thank you for that. It maps out 20 years of smart growth. Phase one, it includes a seven-gate terminal expansion, a rental car center, a facility to support international service. Strategic Plan 2025 to 2029, that's five years. Our roadmap is focused on those five pillars you see up there. We just completed an economic impact report. PSP generated over $2.5 billion. That's with a B, in local economic impact this last year. And in fact, our team just won an Impact Award last week from the Greater Coachella, Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations, Harry and the team who are behind me here today. This continues to demonstrate our commitment to the Greater Coachella Valley. We also support 18,000-plus jobs across aviation, tourism, hospitality, and retail. Over $1 billion in visitor spending is tied directly to PSP. And 98% of those dollars stay right here in the Coachella Valley. That's impressive. ProgressPSP.com, it's our commitment to transparency. You want to see where things stand, log on, take a look at our projects in real time. From planning through completion, you'll see it all there. New routes and real talk. We've added or expanded service across several key markets. United Nonstop to Washington Dulles connects us to the East Coast as well as international destinations. Frontier's return brought seasonal SFO in year-round Denver. Increasing competition and lowering fares across the board on day one that Frontier came in our doors. That forced pricing pressures down, which is a great, great boon to all of us here. Delta's new JFK route joins Alaska, giving us two nonstops to New York City. They're also bringing back Austin post-COVID. This is really exciting. We now have 12 year-round nonstop routes on seven, seven major airlines. That's right, it takes us through summer. So if you're looking to beat the heat, skip the drive, skip the chaos, fly to San Francisco, Denver, and Portland, you could do it right here from PSP. Here's the deal, though. The airlines don't operate on hope, they follow demand. If we want to keep these routes, we need to keep flying them. So folks, continue to fly PSP. Tell all of your friends. Let's keep this momentum going. Looking ahead, we have a lot of things down the pike here. New baggage handling system, modernizing our outbound baggage system to increase speed, reliability, and passenger flow. Our federal inspection facility, we're preparing a formal request to CBP. It is competitive, but the team has done their homework and they're ready to make the case. Rental car center, design and funding plans are underway. Our airport design standards, we're creating a unified design to guide our architecture, signage, and branding, ensuring PSP feels distinct and not generic. All right, I got two more sentences, Mayor? Yeah, okay. One more thing, the expanded art program. 1% of our budgets are now going to public art. We've identified a new art curator role. Thank you to the Art Commission for your collaboration and for helping us get this going. And I'd like to thank the folks who are behind me here, Harry Barrett, Victoria Carpenter, Jake Ingrosso, the, the Commissioners behind me. Without them, none of this could be possible. Thank you all for your, for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. And now with the Architectural Review Committee, Chair Lance O'Donnell. And is there a clicker that our speaker can use?
It's just the green center button. A good clicker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
But before we start, do you know what that green button, that green light is for?
The green light is go.
And what's the orange one, or the yellow one?
The yellow means caution.
And the red one?
And the red one means get the hell out of here. All right, good news for everyone, I was told I have two minutes, so we'll make this short and sweet. So, the Architecture Review Committee is part of a robust structure within the city's planning department, and we are one step in that process, along with the Historic Site Preservation Board, Planning Commission, and city staff. So, our overarching goal is to elevate the quality of the architecture and the planning in our community, and we stand on the shoulders of some pretty big folks. I'm the chair, we have John Walsh, Dan Thompson, Danny Castro, Vice Chair Jackie Thomas, Anna Bastin, and Russ McDonald. So, we've got a good group of architects and landscape architects, and we show up every two weeks and we put our best foot forward. Significant achievements of major hotels in the city are things that we spend quite a bit of time on, and housing developments, and hillside developments. So, up on the board, you can see some of the more recent approvals that have been made through that robust process, that includes the planning department and the planning commission in conjunction with the work that we do. Looking ahead, again, standing on the shoulders of some really big folks and really great infrastructure and architecture here in the city, and trying to uphold that, elevate it, and continue to do the great work that we've seen here in the city. So, appreciate the time, thank you.
All right, wonderful. Now, for the Historic Site Preservation Board, the Chair Jade Nelson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you. My name is Jade Thomas Nelson, and I'm the outgoing Chair of the Historic Site Preservation Board, AKA the HSPB, where I've served for the past seven years. It's great to be with all of you here tonight. Next slide, please. Since the adoption of the Historic Preservation Ordinance in 1981, the HSPB has represented the City Council on all matters related to historic preservation within our city limits. The mission for the Historic Preservation Program is simple, and it is to preserve areas and buildings that reflect elements of cultural, social, economic, political, architectural, and archaeological history pertaining to Palm Springs with the intent to foster civic beauty and to strengthen the local economy. Cultural tourism is a key driver of a city's economic viability by creating immediate and long-term benefits that stimulate investment and reinforce a sense of identity and pride of place. The long-term goal is to strike a thoughtful balance between promoting good development and protecting the integrity of the city's heritage. Next slide, please. The HSPB consists of seven members, and we meet the first Tuesday of every month but August in a large conference room at City Hall to review and discuss items that range from historic designation requests to demolition requests. I have served as the Chair of HSPB alongside Vice Chair Eric Roldow for the last year. Both of our terms end this month, but newly appointed members Eric McCready and Michael Panessa will pick up the mantle starting in July, along with our current remaining members behind me, Janet Hansen, Jeffrey Haer, Kurt Bachmann, Peter Marusi, and Catherine Muschka Hitchcock. Next slide, please. The HSPB has four primary responsibilities. Number one, we process historic site designation applications and provide recommendations to you for designation. Number two, once the sites are designated, the HSPB is charged with reviewing major alterations to ensure that the necessary criteria are met according to the ordinance. Number three, the council has also tasked HSPB with providing educational opportunities for the community regarding historic preservation and its importance to our city. And finally, number four, the board is responsible for reviewing applications for demolition or major changes to class three sites, which are those that have been identified as potentially historic. In the past year, seven additions have been made to our inventory of historic places. This includes the Merrill Lynch Building, currently the Eisenhower Health Center on South Palm Canyon, and the former Gas Company Building on Cinderella's Way. Both buildings demonstrate architectural excellence and highlight a distinct aspect of our history in the post-World War II era. The Garber Residence is the fourth home designated on Southridge, and the Bank of America Building, formerly known as City National Bank, completed a remarkable restoration of the exterior as well as the interior. The board has worked with other commissions as well, in the case of the Pride Art piece approved to be installed at the Historic Francis Stevens Park at Alejo in Indian Canyon. Reflecting on the various designation applications and projects that we've reviewed over the past year, it is quite encouraging to see the growing quality of the city's historic inventory and the community's increasing commitment to historic preservation. Next slide, please. In our ongoing effort to engage with the community in a meaningful and impactful way, an important forum that the HSPB organizes is Preservation Matters. After a one-year hiatus during 2024, the newly formatted event was held this past April right here in the Convention Center in partnership with Palm Springs Architectural Alliance. The theme was Desert Modernism and the Palm Springs School. Not only is this event very well attended by the community, it brings together preservation organizations, working professionals, and students from all levels of education and backgrounds. Looking ahead, HSPB has several goals that align with the council's strategic plan. In support of community service and safety, the board and staff are committed to expanding educational resources related to preservation, and currently efforts are being made to improve accessibility and search methods of our historic inventory so that the public may explore and better engage with the city's historic heritage. And finally, in closing, it has been an absolute joy for me to be of service to the city and to this council all these years while sharing my passion for historic preservation. Much has been accomplished, and there's still much to do, I look forward to being a contributor behind the scenes. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Jade. Is Benji around? Madam Clerk, can we, can we show the other people how to advance the slides? We'll tell the audience this time. Ugo, do you see it?
I see it, it's the green button.
It's a green button, and you just push a green button?
Got it. Okay. Got it. Thank you so much, Brenda.
There's a green button on the remote?
Yes.
Remote, green button.
So, the future folks coming up, you know that there's a green button you gotta push. All right, the, did I call you up?
You can now.
So, Chair Ugo Loyola with the Human Rights Commission.
Good evening, Mayor DeHart, council members, city staff, and community partners. I am Hugo Loyola, I am the Chair of the Palm Springs Human Rights Commission, and I'm proud to present this annual update on behalf of our commission. The Human Rights Commission exists to promote equality, fairness, inclusion, and dignity for all residents of Palm Springs. We serve as a formal advisory body to the City Council on matters of discrimination, civil rights, and community cohesion. Our core functions include recommending social equity initiatives and policy changes, partnering with community-based organizations for education and advocacy, monitoring human rights trends, and reporting to council. Your 2025 strategic plan identifies social equity as one of two overarching principles. This is not just language to us, it's foundation for action. The work of the HRC is fully aligned with that vision. The commission is composed of a dedicated and diverse group of Palm Springs residents, wave your hands. Our 2025 members include Vice Chair David Vignolo, Commissioners Michael MJ Horn, Carlota Rinke, Bobby Remus, Beverly Greer, Don Soja, Scott Nevens, and our newest Commissioner, Malakai Strong, recently appointed by this council. Thank you. I want to thank our staff liaison, Deputy City Manager Jeremy Hammond, for his guidance and for his ongoing support. Thank you, Jeremy. This commission reflects the diversity of our city, and we are united by our commitment to the values this council has affirmed through its strategic plan. Upon returning from hiatus and back to work, the commission has made meaningful strides aligned directly with your strategic goals. Let me briefly highlight four key areas. Number one, social equity. We are leading the revision of Municipal Code Chapter 2.45, modernizing our mandate to better reflect current state and federal standards. These updates enhance our capacity to support inclusion, civil rights, and equity. Number two, public safety and community services. We have partnered with the Palm Springs Police Department to develop and deliver a public education initiative focused on distinguishing hate speech from hate crimes. This effort reinforces community trust while promoting lawful civic discourse and protection for vulnerable groups. Number three, housing and inclusivity. We are updating the city's domestic partnership provisions, ensuring they reflect today's diverse family structures, and offering better access to housing, healthcare, and legal protections for all. And number four, civic engagement. We are streamlining the community service awards process by creating a transparent, point-based evaluation system. This allows us to recognize outstanding service with fairness and reduces bias in the nomination process. All of this reflects our alignment with the city's goals around equity, inclusion, and quality of life. Looking ahead, as we look forward to the remainder of 2025, our work will continue to support the council's strategic vision. For social equity, we have started a citywide equity and belonging dialogue series in collaboration with local, state, and national partners. For public safety and community services, we will continue to advocate for policies that uplift LGBTQ+ youth, seniors, and other vulnerable groups, including access to mental health resources and community-based support. For infrastructure and zoning, we would like to partner with the planning department to provide accessibility and equity-focused recommendations as the city continues zoning modernization and facility upgrades. This aligns with one of the core objectives of the zoning code update. And for economic development, we will support initiatives that address workplace discrimination and promote diversity hiring in the public and private sectors. In short, we're ready to be both a partner and proactive voice in shaping a future where equity is embedded in every department, every project, and every policy. In closing, I want to thank you, Mayor DeHart, and council members for your continued leadership and for making social equity a central priority of your strategic plan. The Human Rights Commission is committed to being a trusted partner in advancing that vision. We look forward to continued collaboration in service of the city that truly values equity, respect, and dignity for all.
All right, next, we have the Library Board of Trustees and Chair Juanita Gardner.
Good afternoon, I'm very happy to be here with you today. We at the Library Board of Trustees are very, very excited about what's to come. So, the Library Board of Trustees' mission, the Library Board of Trustees reviews and amends library policy, reviews progress reports, discusses immediate and long-range library planning, prepares an annual budget, administers the library trust fund, and prepares an annual report for the City Council and California State Library. With all the heavy lifting being done by Jeannie Kaye's and her staff, we are kind of the cheerleaders. Okay, we are a board of five members, myself being the Chair, Vice Chair Reverend Dr. David Norgard, Treasurer Al Jones, Trustee Deborah Schwartz, and our brand-new member Gary Brackett. Some of our significant achievements, we've provided $7,000 in funding to purchase books and eBooks for the library collection. The Board of Trustees has also pledged $1 million in matching funds to support the library renovation and the capital fund drive. Acknowledgement of the library's support for summer reading goes to the Friends of the Library, and we're very thankful to have our partners, both the Friends and the Foundation. They go above and beyond to make sure that our library is, is the best, and that's what we all hope for. Our renovation is happening, yay! Looking forward, as we look forward, we are looking forward to our $10,000, sorry, $10,000 for, that will be used for notification of eBooks for the library's collection, oh, wait a minute, am I on the right one? Yes, for the library's collection. We will continue to provide advocacy and support for the upcoming library renovation project, we will update the library policies, we are planning our 100-year anniversary celebration of the library, and if some of you didn't know, we, there's also a time capsule, so that's pretty exciting. And we will be rebranding the library logo for our temporary space. We are looking forward to our new and improved library. So, it's going to be extra nice, and what I need you to do, though, is while the library is being renovated, while we are in our temporary facility, I want everybody to be extra, extra-nice to our library staff, because they are going to be working so hard to try and keep all of those wonderful programs that they have now while they're in their building, they're going to do this while they are in their temporary facility, and so we need to be really extra kind to them and understand that they're working really, really hard. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and from the Measure J Oversight Commission, we have Chair Peter Sipkins.
Good evening, Mayor DeHart, Mayor Pro Tem Soto, and honorable council members. My name is Peter Sipkins, I've had the honor and the privilege of serving as the Chair of Measure J the past year, and I appeared before the five of you about three weeks ago, so I'll try not to be too repetitive tonight. Those who have heard me speak before know that I'm not bound by PowerPoint slides, so I'm going to divert a little bit from what other Commissioners have been presenting, and I'm going to jump ahead. First, I want to say that the work that we accomplished the last year has been largely responsible to the 10 Commissioners who served with me on this commission. They were among the most intelligent, hardworking, dedicated, committed, and compassionate people that I've ever had the privilege of working with, and I want to thank each and every one of them. I want to thank the staff that we had, which included the Director of Finance, Muni, Director of Engineering, Montalvo, and our Administrative Assistant, Melissa Sanchez, and without their help, we could not have accomplished as much as we did. So, I'm going to jump ahead and show you who the Members of the Commission were. Actually, I believe that that is correct, it's not correct in the, in tonight's agenda, but it is correct up there. Now, we have 10 of the 11 Commissioners. up there. Now, we have ten of the eleven commissioners are returning, so we have a very veteran commission going forward, and we're looking forward to working with everybody next year. What is Measure J, and for that I'll go back. Measure J, as many of you know, is the 1% extra sales tax which is collected in Palm Springs in order to maintain and develop new infrastructure. The mission of Measure J is to review the revenues and expenses of that tax collection. We recommend to the City Council expenditures from those revenues, and we recommend the biennial budget for Measure J funds. We had quite a year this year. We reviewed and scored 51 community-initiated project applications which were seeking in excess of $18 million. We recommended to the City Council to approve 22 of those applications totaling $6.2 million. We conducted monthly reviews of ongoing Measure J-funded projects, and we met with City Council Member Bernstein on a couple of occasions who provided great guidance to us. The year ahead is going to be a very different year for us, for a number of reasons, budget among them. There will likely be no community-initiated project applications considered next year, because we only have $1 million allocated in the budget for it. We are going to be closely monitoring all expenditures to ensure accountability. We are going to be reviewing the 47 projects which are currently funded by Measure J and make sure that they are going forward as intended, and we are going to be working closely with the City Council next year in order to ensure that we are in line with what the priorities are of this council in the '25, '26, and future years. So with that, I want to thank everybody for the service we gave, and I appreciate the time tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. For Parks and Recreation Commission, we have John Maragola.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow boards and commissioners. My name is John Maragola, and I have the privilege of serving as Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm honored to share the highlights from this year and provide a look ahead at the exciting projects shaping our parks and recreation programs. There we go. The Parks and Recreation Department's mission is more than a statement. It's our daily commitment to ensure our community has a welcoming and safe space for all who visit. We strive to provide a variety of inclusive and affordable recreation and leisure programs and aspire to create unity. Our goal is to build partnerships, enhance access, and deliver programs and facilities that are truly like no place else. The Parks and Recreation Commission plays an important advisory role to the City Council. We review and guide matters related to park planning, recreation programs, special events, and leisure activities. We take this responsibility seriously and work to ensure that community needs remain at the center of every recommendation we make. And yes, we know pickleball is very important. I'd like to take a moment to recognize our incredible Parks and Recreation Commissioners. If you serve on this commission, please stand. There they all are, including our newest member. The commission is served by eleven members of the community who bring passion and dedication to the work we do. I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve with these fabulous colleagues. I also want to extend a special thank you to Vice Chair Coladino for his outstanding service and leadership on the Parks and Recreation Commission for the past ten years. Vice Chair Coladino will be terming out this year. We are so grateful for his thoughtful voice and commitment to the Palm Springs community. We are also fortunate to have terrific staff report. There they are. Staff recently gave the commissioners a tour of all our parks and facilities in the city, which gave all of us a deeper appreciation for all the great work that they do. This year has been full of exciting milestones and achievements. One of the most significant achievements this year was the near completion of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The proposed master plan outlines a path to improve and enhance the city's parks and recreation system, and will improve the accessibility and visibility of its facilities, expand delivery of services to residents and visitors, and prepare to meet the future needs of the community. We are most excited to begin the implementation of the master plan and look forward to enhancing our parks and recreation system. Additionally, this year was filled with new playground grand openings. Over the course of this year, we renovated new playgrounds at Victoria Park, Demuth Park, and Baristo Park. Each playground renovation gave a revitalization to the park and brought new community members to enjoy these new amenities. This year, we also were lucky enough to partner with Project Evergreen to renovate the ballfields at Demuth Park, which has also led to increased permitted use of the facility. The team has been actively working to introduce new programs and events aimed at engaging more members of the community and encouraging greater use of our sites. We've also expanded hours at the Demuth Community Center, now staying open later in the evening and on Saturdays, and we're looking forward to extending hours at the Swim Center in the near future. So what's coming up? Looking forward, we are excited about several projects on the horizon coming over this next year. The Demuth Park pickleball court expansion project will start construction this fall, turning 12 of the existing courts into a 24-court pickleball complex. Additionally, at Demuth Park, we will begin construction of both the large and small dog parks, make some improvements to a parking lot, and build a new restroom building. At the Downtown Park, long-awaited improvements to the splash pad are underway, with plans for it to be fully operational again at the start of next year. We will continue with some more playground renovations at Ruth Hardy Park and Desert Highland Park, and we will begin to make some headway in starting construction for the Palm Springs Swim Center Building, where we will improve ADA access, enhance the restrooms and locker rooms, and the lifeguard office. Additionally, through Measure J funding, improvements will be made to the Palm Springs Baseball Stadium. There will be a permanent workout space at Ruth Hardy Park, and planning and design for improvements to Baristo Park, just to name a few. In closing, it has been an incredibly productive year for the Parks and Recreation Commission. We are proud of the progress made, grateful the support of the City Council, and excited about the projects and programs coming in the future. Together, we're creating safe spaces that reflect the unique spirit of Palm Springs that will serve our community for generations to come. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, John. And from the Planning Commission, making her way down, is Chair Kathy Wormick.
Mayor DeHart, Mayor Protem Soto, members of the council, staff, fellow commissioners, and the public. My name's Kathy Wormick, and I have the honor to both serve on and chair the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Our Planning Commission is committed to, oops. Oh, he said big green, and this is small green.
I thought you were trying to get yourself more time.
I am, of course I am. The Palm Springs Planning Commission is committed to fostering thoughtful, sustainable development that preserves our city's distinctive character while promoting economic vitality, housing equity, and community well-being for our residents. We serve as stewards of Palm Springs' unique architectural heritage, natural beauty, and quality of life. I have a great commission. Would they stand? Vice Chair Elaine, who we're especially lucky to have, because she occasionally gets borrowed by the city to head different departments when there are vacancies, is a wonderful member. We also have Carl Baker, Scott Miller, John Morrell, David Murphy, Robert Rotman, and our newest alternate member, Megan Hernandez, who we're thrilled to have with us. They work diligently. My commission has attended seventeen hearings this year and dealt with thirty-five different applications that impact the built environment in Palm Springs. Probably the biggest achievement of the last several years, and which was finished last year, was the completion of an update of the general plan to guide our growth through 2040. A big part of that was negotiating a housing element with the state, which puts additional restrictions on us but clears a path to create 2,600 more housing units in the near future. To meet that goal, in the last year, we have worked on seven, we have touched 785 new housing units, which will be built across the city, some of which are multifamily and some of which are single-family in previously-approved developments like Ascena, Maryland, and Serena Park, which are slowly getting built out. We also worked on the approvals and the permitting of 127 affordable units, and this included 45 ADU units, which bring more housing options, and that's a staff, really a staff-administered program. And I forgot to say the really wonderful staff that we get to work with. Chris, in your department, if you're here, if you would just wave or stand. We also entitled new commercial and industrial spaces to bring jobs and revenue to the city. This includes 20,000 square feet of commercial space, which is five separate projects, and 770,000 feet of industrial space in developments like the Chick-fil-A and the Fulfillment Center north of I-10. These developments, when built out, have the potential to bring 1,000 new jobs. Beyond development, we also assisted in the preservation of important and sensitive land. Last year, we heard and worked together with the City Council to approve the Prescott Preserve and also the preservation, the long-fought-for preservation of Boulter's and Crescendo, which are spectacular lands. The last thing I want to mention is that with the council's help, we have a new alternate member on our commission, and that's, our goal is to bring new, to foster technical skills and more diversity and community representation on the commission. We have a busy year ahead. We are working on the very first comprehensive zoning update in over forty years, and this will work to remove barriers to new jobs and housing that we need. Our goal is to simplify the process, to speed the approvals, while also preserving our community character in history. We also need to look at how the zoning rules can mitigate the effects of a warming climate, provide less hard surface, more shade, more drought-resistant landscape. Our outreach is going on, and we hope to conclude the process in the next year. We're working to, on an update of the newly-branded tram view heights, specific plan to modernize the land-use framework of the city's north end. With the college under construction in a different area of the city, there's huge potential to bring new housing jobs and open spaces to desert highlands and gateway estates, and ensure that our zoning rules don't prevent important new uses like apartments and grocery stores and open spaces to serve our residents. Again, outreach is underway on this, and this should be coming to the council and the commission in the last, in the next year. There's more development coming, too. There are 750 housing units under review.
Kathy, your blinking light is going crazy over there.
Oh, because I haven't moved that.
No, red means it's done. Your time's-
Oh, I'm done. Okay. I had more to say, but you'll hear from us. Thank you so much.
Public Arts Commission is next, with Chair Gary Armstrong.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow commissioners. I'm Gary Armstrong, Chair of the Public Arts Commission. Thank you for inviting us to share our work and our vision. And a quick thanks to Amy Blazdell's team and to Brenda Prey for organizing today. I know this was a lot of work, but it's much appreciated, so thank you. And I assume tonight is like the Academy Awards, and the most important recognition will be near the end of the evening, so, okay. Let's talk purpose. The Public Arts Commission was created to grow, oh, sorry, which, that one, okay, that one. The Public Arts Commission was created to grow, maintain, and promote a dynamic collection of public art. The first line in our ordinances is to add to the economic viability of the community. But more than that, public art helps shape Palm Springs as a creative, future-facing city. It activates civic space, sparks participation, builds partnerships, and supports economic growth. We don't just place objects. We create atmosphere, identity, and pride. And that pride is local. Neighborhood groups from every district now reach out to us, asking for art that reflects their stories and beautifies their community. That kind of grassroots momentum is how public art turns everyday spaces into places of belonging. The image behind you, or in front of you, is popsicles. It's bold, playful, inclusive, and rooted in place, finally, much like Palm Springs itself. This commission represents the city it serves. It's racially diverse, gay and straight, spanning six decades of age, and all five geographic districts. Some of us are born here, others choose Palm Springs for what it stands for. We are the public in public art, and I'd like to recognize them all right there, if they could all stand and get the applause, including our two new members of the commission. This year, we focused on two initiatives: Artscape in the Parks and Beautiful Shade. Artscape brings original, substantial art into the city parks, because art shouldn't live behind barriers. It should meet people where they are. Beautiful Shade installs artist-designed shade structures where residents meet the sun. They're both beautiful and functional, made for this climate, for this community right now, and you can see all the pieces in work in progress right there. They're all ready to go and be installed, and they all will be installed in the fall. And by significant, most of these are around 15 feet tall, and they're going to be in all four of the parks, starting at the north part of the city. They're going to be in Desert Highland, Victoria Park, Gateway Park, and Baristo Park. Okay. Looking ahead, we're launching the city's first cataloging and assessment of the public art collection. Location, artist condition, history, digitally documented and accessible to residents, tourists, students, and scholars alike. It's not glamorous, but it's essential, and it takes infrastructure. Right now, the commission has no full-time staff dedicated to public art. Our budget limit's not just what we can build, but what we can maintain. Uniform sandwich alone, just the size, will cost us $140,000. That doesn't include anything my mother would call modern and fancy, like QR codes or centralized website. So tonight, we're not just reporting out, we're asking you to honor the commitments you've already made. Public art is embedded in every major city plan. The airport expansion includes public art. The Convention Center revitalization includes public art. The library renovation includes public art. Every Parks and Rec master plan includes public art, because public art isn't decoration. It's the actualization of your goals. It brings emotion to design, identity to infrastructure, and vibrancy to civic life. The city's economic development plan is clear. Palm Springs is building an ecosystem that combines its tourism legacy with growth in tech, sustainability, and the creative sectors. That same plan says long-term growth depends on promoting the city as an inclusive and experiential destination. You've already approved that mission. Public art is how we deliver it. So we're asking, please increase our budget, please provide dedicated staff support, and treat public art as a civic priority. You've already declared it to be. Because right now, we can barely support even one new neighborhood request, let alone the development projects already approved by this council. When you invest in public art, you're not indulging a luxury. You're funding the future that you said you all want to build. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. Got to give them points for trying to get more money. Got to give them points for trying to get more money. Sustainability Commission Chair Roy Clark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, staff, and fellow commission members. The mission of the Sustainability Commission is broad. Sustainability means meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. Sustainability supports protection of the natural environment, economic growth, and social progress. As you all know, the city council affirmed sustainability as one of the overarching principles for the city in the 2025 Strategic Planning Session. The other overarching principle is social equity. These are the members of our commission. I'm the chair, Bernard Rotner is the vice chair, and we have seven other members of the commission. And our liaison is L.P. McCloy. I thank them all for their participation and support. Our significant achievements are quite broad. We've continued to organize the commission around Waste Reduction and Climate Action subcommittees. With regard to waste reduction, we regularly receive reports on organics and recycling from Palm Springs' disposal. Just as one number, in 2024, we diverted seven tons of, excuse me, seven, about seven tons of organics from landfill. This is about a sixty-five percent diversion for the city. And with regard to climate action, we supported the development of an energy-efficient upgrade ordinance for residential buildings, which I think you've heard about recently in the budget meeting. We stood up an ad hoc bird strike subcommittee, which made recommendations on bird-friendly building design. We, several commissioners participated in the Healthy Desert, Healthy You, and the Regional Energy and Climate Hub Reach In-Line Empire Conferences. We participated, we supported the Measure J, our committee, commission by ranking sustainability-related projects. I talked to Peter, and we identified twelve of the fifty-two projects as related to sustainability, and those were ranked and approved, the rank was approved by the commission. And we supported shredding and e-waste, community cleanup, and Earth Day events that were planned by our staff. Looking ahead, we'll, we intend to follow the climate action roadmap and focus on reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the building and transportation sectors. Again, you've heard about the energy-efficient upgrade ordinance. We have a Caltrans heat and shade study that staff will be working on. Walkability is included in facility upgrades, particularly the convention center, and there's a tree ordinance that is being worked on by staff as well. One new thing that's come up, that's quite exciting, and it's come through the Waste Reduction Subcommittee, is to identify processes to recycle items that can't be placed in blue bins or donated to thrift shops, such as plastic bags and worn-out shoes and clothing. This came up recently, and we're looking at providing information to residents on how they can do these things. We'd like to increase compliance with the ban on gas-powered leaf blowers, and one new significant thing, too, is that we're standing up another ad hoc subcommittee, which will include members of the Greater Palm Springs ally, animal allies, to address the effects of pesticides on animals. Members of, members of the animal allies have made public comments at commission meetings and have made a presentation, and we thought to, we would leverage their interest in our community by forming this ad hoc subcommittee. Thank you.
All right, Roy, thank you. And on letter V, Village Fest Board, Chair Greg Roberts.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and attendees, I am pleased to tell you that this, in our thirty-third year, Village Fest continues to be one of Palm Springs' most popular venues. In accordance with our mission statement and goals, Village Fest, on a weekly basis, promotes and enhances our community while serving as a destination for residents and tourists alike. Organizing a venue such as this every Thursday night truly takes a village. We are grateful to all the city departments, staff, and especially Parks and Recreation. We should be especially grateful to our citizen volunteer Village Fest Board that, along with Village Staff, has oversight for this Herculean event. And I would also like to mention a member of our staff, Joy Meredith Brown, who represents the downtown merchants, who are very much a part of the Village Fest experience. Significant achievements? How about managing two hundred vendors and thousands of visitors on a weekly basis? We've juried over a hundred and seventy-five vendors or small business entities wanting to be included in Village Fest. We manage vendor performance as it relates to our rules and regulations. We work to support and create special holiday programs to showcase Village Fest and draw visitors to the Palm Canyon Corridor. Last year, we worked with Councilmember Bernstein's Holiday Market, and this year, we are already in the planning phase to make it bigger and better than last year. The board's keystone accomplishment, however, this year, has been our vendor survey. Having pertinent data is essential to help this and future boards manage Village Fest for the next thirty-three years. We were fortunate enough to partner with the Palm Springs High School Academy of Business, Leadership, and Entrepreneurial Program, acronym ABLE. The partnership was truly a win-win. The board was able to establish a baseline on how vendors feel about their participation in Village Fest, and the students were able to see theory put into practice. A special thanks to the students and their academic leader, Kirsten Skaggs. What did we learn? Fifty-three vendors responded to the survey, which is statistically significant. The responses were spread over all of our vendor categories, and the vendor satisfaction is very high, which is great news. Even more importantly, the vendors reported that their sales remained strong, meaning Village Fest is bringing dollars and interest to the downtown corridor while supporting entrepreneurial, small business entities. Plus, the city earns revenue from vendor participation fees. Another positive, ninety percent of those responding intend to continue their participation. While those were our favorable tailwinds, we have some headwinds that we face. Marketing and branding of Village Fest is weak. Currently underway is a plan to solicit bids for a consultant to support us and build a brand and marketing plan. As a follow-on to this, the board recognizes the need for better partnering with our hospitality businesses to promote Thursday night event for their guests and visitors. Clearly, Village Fest should be a Thursday night destination. The vendors told us that we must have a mechanism to promote them and spotlight them. This is a small ask with potential big payback. Our biggest headwind, however, is our food court, the food trucks. It is our most popular category by far and our biggest crowd draw. Due to the food vendor's popularity and the crowds, it is difficult to navigate the area, and when you do purchase food, there is very limited space to sit and eat. The configuration is not particularly visitor-friendly, nor is it conducive to a fun dining experience. We see this as a real opportunity for incremental improvement, and our ask is that we will approach the city with some recommendations on how we can improve this and make this better. We are confident that the paybacks will justify the efforts. Looking ahead, the board will expand our survey scope to include attendees. We will start this project in the fall, when the high school's students return from summer break. When the data is collected and completed, our goal is to make a formal presentation to council with recommendations and visions for keeping Village Fest current to meet the needs of all its stakeholders. In closing, I would like you to see some of the survey comments that were received in our data collection. The input should give us pride and affirm the value that Village Fest brings to our city, its businesses, residents, and visitors. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. I think I learned a little bit new tonight, so I appreciate everybody sharing the stories of your commissions and what you do, and for those that really looked forward into next year, really appreciate that glance on what's coming. You know, the one thing that, there seems to be a thread that goes through all of our commissions is we truly have a very engaged and committed community. And this goes back to my opening comments on thanking you for your service. You know, looking at, you know, going from the airport and having a $2.5 billion economic impact on the city of Palm Springs and the jobs that that creates in the hospitality sector. Looking at how much work is going into preserving our historical and cultural history. That is just something that I hope we all are proud of, that our city is caring as much as it does, and that we've got a commission that really is dedicated and spends a tremendous amount of time documenting these historical, architectural properties for our city. You know, and the fact that planning has done a lot of work, but more, most importantly, I think, being able to have gone through the process of approving seven-hundred-and-eighty-five new housing units in the city at a time when we are desperately in need of housing and workforce housing, that's a huge accomplishment in itself, and the commission did a lot more than that, as Kathy shared on her slides. And very surprised, only Gary asked for more money, so I heard Village Fest makes money, so maybe they could send some over, Gary, and help fund some of your projects. But truly, much appreciation to everything that you all do and the time and energy you put into the commissions. Mayor Protem, would you like to say anything?
I think the only thing I would add is just the amount of expertise cumulatively in all of this service is quite incredible, and from my own experience in doing some of the interviews for some of the recent fills, we are a lucky city to have you all helping us lead it, so just deep gratitude for all of you.
Councilmember Bernstein? I know you're always good for a word or two.
Yes, yes, you always say that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do want to also thank the staff for putting this on. It is an extra meeting, and it's a lot of work, but I really want to thank the commissioners. And, you know, it is amazing, as you heard before, the expertise that is in this room and the commitment, and you're all volunteers, and it is a lot of work. It is nice to see how we're seeing more of our community reflected in our commissioners, I think probably more so than ever before. And I would encourage you to get other people involved, just every year when we go through the commissions. You know, and somebody asked, you know, what, why this joint meeting actually is helpful, and I think one of the important things is you see how interconnected so many of our commissions and boards are, that whether it's a public art, or whether it's economic development, or whether it's Stark Site, all of you have something in connection with another commission, and obviously Measure J, and so I think there is a reason to do it. This also, these commissions have a lot of influence on our budget. We're in the middle of our budget session, and I don't think we would get there without the commissions. In fact, I don't think the city could really run, as Mayor Protem, without the expertise and the work that all of you do, because frankly, we don't have any more time for us to do it, and our staff. And I also want to, it's not lost on us how many huge projects have happened or are going on, whether it's the airport master plan, the library renovation, the parks master plan, the huge Measure J project, the zoning code. So there really is a lot, and I just want to thank everybody for tonight and for the work that you do throughout the year and the work that you'll do in the years to come. So thank you all.
See, and I forgot to say, I should have said, you always have very good and insightful words to share, so thank you. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, just a couple of quick words. So first of all, I think you see how you're all part of the tapestry of this city government. You all have a role to play, components to do, and you do it. And so we can't really thank you enough, and that's been said, but one thing I think you've noticed is you've come up against constraints, right? Understanding how government works, some great ideas you have that maybe can't get done or get done quickly, but we start to realize it's all about resources and capacity. But that being said, I've seen so many great ideas emerge from boards and commissions, and we get around these resource and capacity issues by some creative thinking, and staff at every turn will help you do that. And so I just want to say, if you have good ideas that maybe don't bloom right away, don't give up, because it can be done. Staff will be creative. We want you to succeed, and I just want you to know what you do is important and appreciated. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. You know, I'm feeling a little left out. Councilmember Ready has a dog park named after him, and tonight, we learned that Councilmember Bernstein has a holiday market. It's like Holy Moses. Grace and Nami and I, we got to put our name on something there. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you so much. Just thank you all, and thank you to the commissioners, the staff, for everything that you do for our city. It really is truly appreciated, as everyone has said. I think my only other addition to this is just, I really hope that maybe next year we can think about a way that we can be a little bit more interactive. I would love to be able to mingle with all of you a lot more, and for you all to be able to mingle more with each other. And if we are going to do presentations, I really want to be where the people are and not up here, so my other request is if we can be with everyone and not looking down on everyone, that's my request for next year, because I think it's really meaningful that we all get a chance to talk and chat as well in how we learn about each other's projects.
Very good. And with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting for the next regularly city council meeting that will be held on Thursday, June 25 at 5:30 PM. Thank you all.